Okay, Baltimore City Council Ways and Means Committee. We're here for a few bills today. I'm Eric Costello, councilman from the 11th District. Chair of the committee, joined to my left by Councilman Robert Stokes, 12th District Vice Chair of the committee. To his left, Councilman Chris Burnett, 8th District Member of the committee. Councilman Ryan Dorsey, 3rd District Member of the committee. To my immediate right and I, Garrett Staff to the committee. We're joined by representatives from the mayor's office and the council president's office. First, Council Bill 24-0597, city property, renaming Riverside Park Pool to the Congressman Elijah E. Cummings Community Pool. That hearing is now called to order, and that hearing is now called to recess. The reason for that is that bill is going to be in front of the Planning Commission. I believe we're going to have that on the Planning Commission agenda for November 7th. So we will come back to address that matter once we get through Planning Commission, and at that time, I will speak to the intent behind this bill. Next item. Council Bill 24-0596, sale of property, 1400 Lenon Hall Street. Law Department approved for form and legal sufficiency?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Department of Planning.
Favorable.
Thank you, Department of Housing and Community Development.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We respectfully stand behind our favorable bill report.
Thank you, Department of Public Works.
No objection.
Thank you, Department of Transportation.
Favorable.
Thank you, Department of Real Estate, Comptroller's Office. Thank you. Department of Finance?
Laura Larson, Department of Finance. We stand behind our favorable response.
Thank you. Office of Equity and Civil Rights?
Mr. Chair, Zachary Roman from the Office of Equity and Civil Rights. OECR makes no recommendation on City Council Bill 24-0596.
Favorable, unfavorable, or no objection?
No recommendation. We haven't, because a buyer and a use for the property has not been identified, we don't want to speculate as to potential equity impacts. However, we do see no inequity in the intent to sell the property, just not the use of the property.
Understood, and of course, the sale of the property itself is a matter that's handled outside of the council. We just authorized the sale of the property, so, okay. Excellent, thank you. Colleagues, any questions for our city agencies? Seeing that there are none, are there any members of the public who wish to testify in this matter? Again, this is the sale of property for 1400 Lenon Hall Street. Seeing that there are none, is there a motion to move this bill favorably? Motion by Dorsey, second by Burnett. Costello is a yes, Burnett? Dorsey? Stokes? Schleifer, Middleton, and McCray are absent. This bill passes 4-0 and moves to the next full meeting of the City Council. Next up, Council Bill 24-0593, ordinance 24-362, revenue obligations, water projects, repeal and replace. Also been joined by Councilwoman Danny McCray, 2nd District Member of the committee. Law Department, approved for form and legal sufficiency?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Department of Planning?
We have no objection.
Thank you, Baltimore Development Corporation.
Mr. Chair, we stand by our favorable report.
Thank you. Department of Public Works?
No objection.
Thank you, Department of Finance. And for any of our other agencies that are here, hate to inconvenience you, but I'm going to ask you to follow our Budget Director, Ms. Larson's lead, and come up just to say what your position is on the mic, so folks at home can hear you. Ms. Larson?
The Department of Finance stands behind our favorable bill response.
Thank you. Department of Transportation? Thank you. Colleagues, any questions for our city agencies? Seeing that there are none, are there any members of the public who wish to testify in this matter? Seeing that there are none, is there a motion to move the bill favor? Motion by Stokes, is there a second? Second by Dorsey. Costello is a yes, Burnett? Dorsey? Stokes? McCray? Middleton and Schleifer absent. This bill passes 5-0, next, moves to the next full meeting of the City Council. Next up, Council Bill 24-0530, transit-oriented development, West Baltimore. Law Department approved for form and legal sufficiency?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Department of Planning?
These were unassigned, since they were not TOD, as in zoning. They're state designations, so we have no interest, so no position on this or the next.
Excellent. Department of Transportation?
No objection.
Thank you. Colleagues, any questions for our city agencies? Seeing that there are none, are there any members of the public who wish to testify in this matter? Again, this is transit-oriented development, West Baltimore. Seeing that there are none, colleagues, is there a motion to move the bill favorably? Motion by Dorsey, second by Burnett. Costello is a yes, Burnett? Dorsey? McCray? Stokes? Schleifer, Middleton absent. This bill passes 5-0, next, moves to the next full meeting of the Baltimore City Council. Next up, Council Bill 24-0529, transit-oriented development, Reisterstown Plaza Amendment. Law Department, approved for form and legal sufficiency with amendments?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Can you please explain the amendment?
Wait. I don't, I don't recall making a statement about--
Or just comments?
I think it's fine.
Oh, we're good to go.
Yeah.
Outstanding. Department of Transportation, favorable?
Favorable.
Thank you. Colleagues, any questions for our city agencies? Seeing that there are none, are there any members who wish to testify in this matter? Again, this is transit-oriented development, Reisterstown Plaza Amendment. Seeing that there are none, colleagues, is there a motion to move the bill favorably? Motion by Stokes, second by Dorsey. Costello is a yes, Burnett? Dorsey? McCray? Stokes? Middleton and Schleifer absent. This bill passes 5-0, next, moves to the next full meeting of the Baltimore City Council. Next up, Council Bill 24-0592, zoning, conditional-use parking lot, 301 East Lombard Street, AKA, also known as 300 East Pratt Street. Law Department, favorable? Approved for form and legal sufficiency?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Anything to add to that report?
No, sir.
Thank you. BMZA?
Tyler Schnella, Mayor's Office of Government Relations, on behalf of BMZA, they defer.
Thank you. Department of Planning, favorable?
Favorable.
Thank you. Baltimore Development Corporation? Please make sure the red light is on, hit the button in the, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Micah Fetz again for the Baltimore Development Corporation. We stand by our favorable report.
Thank you. Department of Housing and Community Development?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jason Redd, representing DHCD. We respectfully stand behind our favorable bill report.
Thank you. Fire Department, no objection?
No objection.
Thank you, sir. Department of Transportation?
We defer to the Parking Authority.
Thank you. Parking Authority of Baltimore City?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Christmas Age Parking Authority, we stand by our favorable bill report.
Thank you. Office of Equity and Civil Rights?
The OECR stands by its report and has no objection. No objection.
No objection, thank you. Colleagues, any questions for our city agencies? Seeing that there are none, are there any members of the public who wish to testify in this matter? Again, this is the conditional-use parking lot, 301 East Lombard Street. Seeing that there are none, I move the bill favorably. Is there a second? Second by, motion by Costello, second by Stokes. Costello is a yes, Burnett? Dorsey? McCray? Stokes? Schleifer and Middleton are absent. This bill passes 4-1 and moves to the next full meeting of the Baltimore City Council. Next up, 24-0583, the 2024 Comprehensive Master Plan for the City of Baltimore. This is, gotta be the record for number of agency comment reports that I've seen on a bill in my decade in office. Okay, let's start off with the Law Department, approved for form and legal sufficiency?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
And you have amendments?
Um, I think there might have been a small typo, and that's the amendment, but let me, I'll look it up real quick.
Okay, I'll come back to you, Ms. Rulie. Let me jump to Department of Finance next.
The Department of Finance stands behind our favorable response.
Okay. We have representatives from Fire and Police, correct? For this one?
Correct.
Give me one second. I'm going to need a pen, because this list is quite long. What's, what's Fire Department's position on this one?
We have no objections. We're also deferring it to the Department of Planning.
Excellent. Police Department?
Good morning. Erin Murphy, Director of Government Affairs for BPD. We have no objection.
Excellent. Colleagues, I want to go a bit out of order here and ask if anyone potentially anticipates any questions for Fire or Police related to this matter? Does anyone have any concerns if I dismiss Fire and Police? Okay, Fire, Police, you guys are good, thank you. Okay, we're going to come back to law.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, there was a, about two words missing from part of the bill, and so the amendment to our report is just to add them. It's a reference to the correct section of state law. That's all it does.
Okay. We have that amendment drafted?
It's attached to Law Department's bill report, if you want it.
Outstanding, okay, we'll come back to that. DHCD, favorable?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Outstanding. We did Planning already? We're, come back to you last, we did Finance. Office of Equity and Civil Rights?
The OECR stands by its report, in favor of City Council Bill 24-0583, but provided that the amendments requested in the Planning Commission's staff report are adopted.
Thank you. Baltimore BSIT? Oh, we got it, we got it, yep.
I didn't even see Fabian Beck.
I didn't see her either.
Baltimore City Information and Technology stands by its favorable report.
Thank you. BMZA?
BMZA stands by their report, deferring to Department of Planning.
Thank you. Transportation?
We support the bill.
Thank you. Housing Authority of Baltimore City?
Crystal High Poly, HABC, favorable?
Thank you. Mayor's Office of Employment Development?
The Mayor's Office of Employment Development stands behind their report, Mr. Chair.
And that's favorable or defer?
Favorable.
Thank you. Health?
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. Julia Roche, Legislative Affairs Director of the Baltimore City Health Department, and we stand by our favorable report.
Thank you, Ms. Roche. Always a pleasure. Department of Legislative Reference? Okay, we'll come back to that. That's interesting, considering they drafted the bill, but moving on. Office of Mayor?
Tyler Schnella, Mayor's Office of Government Relations. We support this bill wholeheartedly.
Thank you. Simple support would have sufficed, but thank you. That's always welcome. Mayor's Office of Small and Minority Business Advocacy and Development?
The Mayor's Office of Small and Minority Business Development stands behind their bill report, deferring to the Department of Planning.
Thank you. Mayor's Office of Neighborhood and Safety Engagement?
Mon C stands behind their bill report and requests a favorable report.
Thank you. DPW?
No objection.
Thank you. Baltimore City Recreation and Parks?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. We support the bill, but we would like perhaps the inclusion of language for additional funding to support the capital maintenance improvements and ma, or the capital improvements and maintenance.
I'm going to come back to you. Commission on Aging?
Mr. Chair, the commission didn't have a meeting in time to consider the bill.
Okay, we'll, we'll proceed, but thank you. Mayor's Office of Disabilities?
Similarly, the Mayor's Commission on Disabilities did not have a meeting in time to consider the bill.
Thank you. Enoch Pratt Free Library? Is that, that is not an employee of the Enoch Pratt Free Library?
Yeah. And I don't have a report from them, Mr. Chair, to read out to you.
Okay, Baltimore City Public School System, Ms. Broome? Excellent, thank you. Mayor's Office of Economic and Neighborhood Development?
Mr. Chair, that is not an office within the mayorality, so I did share that with the council president's office.
Well enough, thank you. Okay. So, we have, yeah, okay. All right, so Law Department was approved for form and legal sufficiency, and there is an amendment that you all have?
Yes, the amendment simply adds the correct cite to the state law. There was a part of that citation that was left off inadvertently, and so we're just adding the correct cite to the state law. That's it. It's attached to our report, and we would hope that you would consider it favorable.
And you would characterize that amendment as entirely technical in nature, correct?
It's completely technical in nature. All it did was leave off either the title or the subtitle reference to state law. It got the section correct, but only one of the other two.
Perfect. Colleagues, I'm going to go a bit out of order again, considering that Law Department's amendment is entirely technical in nature. I will entertain a motion to move that amendment prior to questions for our agencies or public testimony. Motion by Dorsey, second by Burnett. All those in favor of that amendment say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. That amendment carries unanimously. Okay, so Law Department's good. Department of Legislative Reference, I'm going to proceed without them, although I'm certain that Mr. Gothorner and his staff are watching today's proceeding, so if there's a concern, we will hear about it. Okay, Wreckin' Parks, Ms. Morgan, please, so you have an amendment?
We're going to work with administration on this, Mr. Chair.
When are you going to do that?
There will be no amendment. We'll have a conversation with Wreckin' Parks around the piece around the additional funding request.
Got it, okay. All right. Department of Planning? Floor is yours.
Hi, good morning. Sarah Parnallum, Division Chief for Policy and Data Analysis with the Planning Department. I just wanted to provide a little bit of background and then share with you the Planning Commission's recommendations. The Planning Commission did have two, two sets of amendments to the bill, but just by way of background, this plan is the city's first comprehensive plan since 2006, and the focus of the plan is the spaces, places, and neighborhoods within Baltimore City. The plan provides guidance to evaluate policies, programs, and land use changes, and asks the question, how can city policies related to urban planning make the experience of living in Baltimore better for current and future residents? The plan is intended to guide equitable neighborhood development over the next 10 years and beyond, and the purpose is to advance policies that support current residents and make Baltimore an inviting place to live. This plan meets a state requirement that every jurisdiction in Maryland is required to complete a 10-year comprehensive plan following the decennial census, and in addition, it meets a city charter requirement that the Planning Commission adopt and revise a master plan for the proposed physical development of Baltimore City. Although the plan is called a comprehensive plan, it's not all-encompassing. It's really focused on the physical development of the city, and it has five primary sections: the introduction, the background, growth and retention, policy recommendations, and plan shaping the city. The growth and retention section asks two primary questions: where and how is the city investing in neighborhoods to support existing residents, and what are the opportunities for growth? The policy recommendations section dives into 17 policy topics organized into four themes: livable places, equitable access, healthy communities, and inclusive economy. And it identifies goals, metrics, recommendations for each of those 17 topics, providing a menu of options for future policy changes. And those recommendations could be implemented with existing resources, some of them require additional resources, and some of them offer some big inspirational ideas for the future. And then the final section, Plan Shaping the City, is the geographic section of the city, highlighting a number of recent and ongoing planning processes that are really changing the landscape of the city, from Middle Branch to Perkins-Samerset, Old Town, to the impact investment areas. And so we used an equity framework in developing the plan and had an extensive planning process. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the plan at its meeting on October 10th with two proposed amendments. The first is to change the reference to the plan from being the version revised on September 11th to a version that is revised October 11th. So there's a number of updates to the plan document itself, and so we're replacing the plan document with an updated version. That includes some formatting changes, some changes to the Design for Public Safety section, some updates to the goal statements, and so the other set of amendments that the Planning Commission proposed are for the goal statements themselves. Included in the bill are the goal statements themselves, and as those are being updated in the plan, those need to be revised in the bill itself. So those are the two types of amendments that the Planning Commission proposed, and those are detailed in the staff report that was submitted.
Excellent, thank you. So just a, just a couple housekeeping items. So we took care of the Law Department's amendment, which I assume Planning has no concern with, correct? Okay, excellent. And then Planning has two buckets of amendments, if you will. Those still need to be drafted by DLR, correct?
Yes, I shared them with them Friday, but yes.
And, and that's totally fine. That's part of the reason why I scheduled two hearing dates for this, just because of how much this touches. So colleagues, we're, for the Department of Planning, well, let me take a step back. So we scheduled a hearing. We've also been joined by Council Vice President Sharon Green-Middleton, 6th District Member of the committee. So today is October 15th. We have a subsequent hearing for this bill scheduled for October 29th, Tuesday at 10:00 a.m. Okay, so we're not going to entertain the amendments from the Planning Department today. We can discuss those if we want, but, but we won't have a motion for those because they are quite lengthy and they're simply not drafted yet. So let me start with colleagues, are there any concerns with that, that we'll deal with those amendments in two weeks? Okay, hearing none. So now we will jump into questions for our city agencies. Before we go to our city agencies, outside of the Department of Planning, colleagues, are there any questions for city agencies other than the Department of Planning? And the reason I'm asking is I'd like to excuse the, the other agencies, unless there is a, if any colleague has a preference to keep them here, we will keep them here? DHCD and DOT? Wreckin' Parks? Any other agencies that we'd like to keep? Okay, so, other than law, you have to stay, sorry. And DOT? DHCD and Planning? Councilman? All right, we'll keep all the agencies. Let's do that. I'm, it's getting a little messy. That was, that was ill-advised on my part, Councilman. Grab the mic, yep. Maybe we could focus our questions at the outset here on these other agencies before we go into Planning and-- Why don't we do that? Yeah, that's a great idea. I probably have like one question-- Okay. Why don't we start with Burnett? You had a question for DPW?
I did. So on page 7 of the bill, under environmental and climate justice, there were two, two things that popped up for me. One, it says, you know, reduce exposure, frontline overburden, and environmental justice communities to environmental pollutants. One of the issues that this body took up in the last term was concerns about trash incinerating, the trash incinerator, and, you know, obviously, the bill is done, you know, that's, I don't think that's going to be revisited, but I think the, the point that was raised over and over again in, in those hearings was concerns about how we are planning to move away from incinerating trash due to the environmental impact and other ways that we can divert a lot of that waste into other, either reusable forms of recycling, I'm not sure, not using the right words here, but essentially, what, what ways are we trying to reach those goals to create a more sustainable city and moving away from likely the largest polluter in the city of Baltimore, which would be the rescue incinerator?
Hi, Chairman Alejandro Ivanovitch from the Department of Public Works. I believe Sofia is going to answer that for you. Thanks.
Hello, Sofia Jose, and you're Waste Manager for the Department of Public Works. We worked closely with the Department of Planning to develop a comprehensive plan, and a lot of the goals that are outlined are in line with a solid waste management plan. As you may recall, we renewed the 10-year solid waste management plan in January of this year, where we have created a plan for the coming 10 years, both in terms of investment and infrastructure, for what we would need in order to maximize diversion and potentially cease relying on incineration as a means to manage municipal waste. That does include, you know, significant infrastructure that would allow us to separate and sort, and sort materials that are valuable, that are currently being disposed of, and of course, you know, that comes with a cost. So you will see, you know, some of those cost requests for maximized diversion in our budget this year, and, yeah, we hope to continue to coordinate for, you know, city planning documents to ensure that waste diversion is a priority across the board.
Got it. Thank you. That was the first question I had for DPW. I'm guessing we're doing two. Two, okay. The second question I had was I didn't, and maybe I missed it, and perhaps this is more of a planning question, I'm not sure, but one of the issues that have come up repeatedly, both in my district and the 14th District, are areas of repeated flooding, and maybe this is like a question kind of for Planning, because one of the biggest drivers for that has been development and the approval of areas in which we are continuing to build in areas that may not necessarily be a designated floodplain, is something I'm dealing with in my district right now, but like 200 feet away, we talked about this a little bit, so I don't want to give any details on my district, because I know it's not exclusive to that, but I have a few areas that, due to, I would say, excessive deforestation and sort of, that sort of lack of vision, I think DPW is going to continue to have to come up with like flood mitigation plans if this plan isn't reflective of the real need that we have, which is to be a lot smarter on the sort of bigger picture of like, where are we removing potential assets, like trees and other, other things that could be also a part of a larger flood mitigation effort? How is DPW coordinating with the Planning Department and other entities with that sort of vision in mind to make our city more sustainable by being a little bit more cautious in, in where we develop in new housing and in other amenities?
I can do that one?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, no worries, no worries. I can actually step closer to it, is that better? Okay. Kim Grove with the Department of Public Works. So the first way that we are doing inter-agency coordination is through the Flooding and Infrastructure Work Group under the Mayor's Office, Mayor's Subcabinet for Sustainability and Resiliency. This working group wasn't that start of the collaboration. The collaboration actually stemmed from 2018, when we first started addressing flooding through Frederick Avenue, and the agencies like Emergency Management, DOT, DHCD, and DPW all were working together to look at what different interventions can be done. One of the struggles that we have, though, is that as it relates to flooding, especially flooding along the stream, we don't have full control of the entire watershed. So in addition to the collaboration that we are doing within the city, we are also working with the other-- working with the other counties, whether it is through the Baltimore Metropolitan Council or through the Urban Waters Federal Partnership, and where there is another flooding work group where we are working with S H A, Baltimore County, M D E, as well as some nonprofit partners and federal and local researchers to not only better understand flooding, but also look at what governance structures we may be able to develop. Right now, as it relates to development under the 2007 Stormwater Management Act, if impervious areas being added, you cannot increase the amount of peak runoff. However, we're facing impacts like the Emerald Ashore, where we've had a lot of loss of tree canopy from just a natural, natural phenomenon that neither the city nor the county could fully control. So trying to understand what those impacts are, and then having that governance structure to be able to look at mitigation strategies that may be more effective in the county versus where it's in the city. So that's all the coordination. In addition to that, the Department of Public Works started a pilot project to create a hydraulic and hydrologic model to simulate certain storms and start to predict where the, where the flooding will occur, not just from our streams, but also within our roadways. We are doing that in coordination with the Baltimore Social Environmental Corps Collaboration, which is a 51 research, five-year program that was funded by the Department of Energy to look at both heat island and flooding. So we have a lot of smart people looking through all on this. On the pilot program, we've done three subwatersheds, and we just put out a request for proposal to go citywide. By having this model, we'll not only be able to identify where flooding is occurring, but maybe we're not getting the 3-1-1 calls. Maybe we haven't had that storm in recent history where we would be able to tap in. We'll be able to predict that better. And more importantly, we will start to be able to look at what things, whether they're projects or policies, like a comprehensive plan of where development could be more effective or where tree planting could be more effective, where that will be, how much of an effect it will have for different types of storms. So that's the long-term plan with it all. And also by having this model, as well as the projects that we're identifying through the, through the working groups, we'll start to put those in the disaster, sorry, the DP3, the disaster planning project, disaster preparedness and planning project that's in there. So that's how we're trying to address flooding. But I will say that each year, we keep getting different challenges that come through, whether it's the types of storms we're having or when they're having it in the middle of the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
My questions for DPW are kind of on the non-storm water impacts to infrastructure. My questions and comments throughout this hearing are almost uniformly going to focus on housing development and the capacity to expand our housing opportunity in the city. And, you know, one of my repeated experiences in hearing from, as you might imagine, I'm going to be frank, NIMBYs and bad faith actors opposing any level of multifamily housing and housing expansion in their neighborhoods, is that they try to weaponize the age or sufficiency of our public works infrastructure. Basically saying like, how do you even know that it's possible to build new housing in our neighborhoods? Do we even have the ability to deliver water or sewer services if you increase the number of dwelling units in an area? I want to ask DPW if this is something that's encountered in the course of approving new housing, how frequently we are seeing that our water or sewer infrastructure is insufficient for, you know, both, I guess, large, because we do have these big new buildings that go up, but also conversions of old industrial buildings to housing. But even when we routinely approve these one to two or one to three dwelling conversions of existing dwellings, is this something that's commonly seen? And then is that something that's accounted for in our comprehensive plan?
So Kim Grove again with Department of Public Works. I'm with the Office of Research and Environmental Protection, which also includes the Plans Review and Inspection Section, which is responsible for issuing utility permits, which any developer, if they're making a new connection or reconnecting with a service, both water and wastewater, has to get that permit from our office. For multifamily, as far as what the demands go, a lot of it is dictated by what's going to be needed for the fire suppression system. And so we will defer to the Fire Marshal's Office about what's going to be sufficient for it. For the sanitary, for any connections, actually, before I leap off, on the water side, in addition to what we have as a working hydraulic model for the water system, we also perform fire flow tests for any of those connections to confirm what our model is showing is actually the ability for the system to be able to provide that kind of pressure for the fire suppression, for the proposed fire suppression system. And that has to be done within a year of the development. As far as I know, it's not been the absolute use. It's really been about where the location is. And there have been a few times where we already knew that the pipes may be having a low pressure problem, and it's already on our capital improvement plan to improve that. For the sanitary side, we do request, or we do have to approve any sanitary connections that are coming in. And if we have the capacity, because we are under a consent decree for sanitary sewer overflows, so we do not want the development to start adding to that problem. And that is done during the development process. But your initial question was, can our system support transitioning to a multifamily? The majority of our system was designed and installed prior to the 1950s when we were at the peak of our population within the city. As far as those trends that are happening out in the county, that is coordinated with the county, both on the water system as well as the wastewater system that is being sent to our wastewater treatment plants. But for our system within the city, we evaluate it for each part. We try to coordinate as much as possible to let them know if there is a deficiency, how it may be already in the works for a capital improvement plan, if possible. As far as the exact numbers, that will, we'll have to come back to it if there has been anything that has been denied based on capacity. Typically, if there's some, if that's an issue, it's done during the developer's agreement process, and a developer may take it upon themselves to make that change if that change can be done and be effective in its short area, like one pipe getting a little bit larger. But that's, you know, the sooner that developers can come in and just assess it, and we usually identify that during the Site Plan Review Committee for larger projects, the sooner they know that as a potential challenge or a risk, it, it's easier to incorporate within their design and their overall plans.
So you said you have to go back and look to see, is that something that's relatively easy to do, to see how many development proposals have come to the department's attention where the department had to say, actually, no, you can't do this because our system can't accommodate this development?
The, yeah, yeah, there's, there's not too many. I see most of the ones that say, yes, you can. The, actually, the majority of the ones where there have been any issues have been on the sanitary side, and they have been more in the, like around the harbor area where the developer has elected to have some type of holding tank or, or, or a pump station to be able to hold things back. And there's only been one or two of those locations.
And have there been any, this is a silly question. Have there been any cases where we've?
Absolutely said no?
Where we've, uh, let's see, said yes and then regretted it?
I think where we've had issues is where we've said yes, and then the development doesn't occur for another five, six, eight years. And so we've had to look at our own policies of how long the yes should be in play. And those have not been well, the, the final decision's not been made yet, but that has, it's really been about seeing each of the development proposals as a whole, how it's going to make an effect on our system.
So, but so if, if a person wanted to like convert a house into four apartments, there's, there's little, no chance the Department of Public Works would allow that to happen if it was going to have an adverse impact on the system?
Something like that is not a significant change. If you were to say a small city block and suddenly you're having a large high-rise where it's multiple, or you have an area where now you're having a lot of food service establishments, that could make that difference. But a small conversion like that is, is not, is not typically going to be an issue unless the fire flow test is showing that the system itself is not, is not sufficient. And, and that's why we do the fire flow test so close to when the design is, because it is an aging infrastructure and things can change from year to year.
But, and that's a test of the pressure in the vicinity, not at the address?
It is, because it's done with the, with the fire hydrants, it's on the pipe that it would be connecting to.
Got you. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I heard my colleague, Councilman Burnett and Councilman Odette talking about the flooding. And my question is, over in Broadway East between Wolf and Washington Street, there's flooding there also. So my question is, do you have a list of, not particular districts, but a list of communities that right now are dealing with flooding? Do y'all have a list that you can provide? Because I only think Broadway East off of Wolf and Washington, awful off yet. We have that strong rain, that whole area, actually, you can't even get down the street. If you go down Chester Street, right off of Biddle, and go under that bridge, you can't even drive your car there. It's like a swimming pool. So do y'all have a list of those areas that continue to have flooding problems?
So we have coordinated with the Office of Emergency Management, where they have had to do vehicular rescues. And so the areas where we have common street flooding, we have that list set up related to Broadway East through our work with Baltimore Social Environmental Collaboration. We've been able to talk with community members, and it's interesting you bring that one up. That one is not so much flooding from water coming over land and coming into a window or basement door, but actually the groundwater or the perched water underneath the ground seeping into the basements, whether it's through cracks in the floor or, or seeps like that. And it's allowing us to understand what we don't understand. The, the problem with that particular one is people don't always call in to 3-1-1 when they have water in their cellar if it's coming from the walls. If it's coming as a basement sewer backup and, and it's something that is a service that the city can provide, they'll call about that. But that other one's a bit of a mystery. Also, folks may have taken it upon themselves to already get pumps or French drains or floodproofing. But through the Flooding and Infrastructure Working Group, between OEM, Planning Office of Sustainability, and DHCD, we have been trying to figure out ways, number one, where are those areas that are having the issues? And how is that water coming in? And is there any kind of intervention that can be done? The intervention can be anything from making sure that folks know the resources for floodproofing to seeing if we can find more resources related to floodproofing. The final one is also looking at, as a policy, if those areas, and you have a lot of basement flooding, if they're going to redevelopment, do we try to warn them away from doing basements or substructures without doing some kind of groundwater modification?
The reason why I brought it up, because they have had CCTV go there, and they still have those same problems. My other question, I'd like to work with DPW, because when it rains, there's a lot of clogged drains in the city. And a lot of the time, that water kind of backs up on the street. So I would like to work with DPW to identify some of those drains in my district, I'm sure my colleagues, because if you ride through some neighborhoods, they haven't been cleaned, it's clogged with trash. So are y'all looking at that also?
Yes, yes. So about seven years ago, we started proactive inlet cleaning. That is actually going into the inlet structure and pulling stuff out. And we really targeted areas where it's the sump area. I mean, water has nowhere else to go, it's the bottom of the bowl. But the other things that we are trying to do on our 3-1-1, when, when the crews go out there, is answering certain questions and understanding how much of the top street level was also choked, you know? And that's where we've seen, especially in really intense storms that can carry a lot of material down there, when they're finally going out to react to it, there's a lot of material that's on top. So just trying to get that data. But yes, we can provide that to you where we are doing both proactive and where we've had repeat reactive choked, choked inlets.
And the only reason I ask, about a year ago, they cleaned a drain in my district. It was chock full of trash. It was so much trash in that drain. I mean, the whole back truck had a little bit of everything in it. That's why my question was, are we being real proactive and making sure we look at those inlets and make sure we keep them clean? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Ms. Grove. McCray?
I'll start with DPW. Within a recent rat mitigation hearing, it was highlighted that there was a lack of an effective, full-blown community engagement in public education program surrounding cleanliness within our neighborhoods. Knowing that we're looking to revise the neighborhood cleanliness goals, can DPW speak to the timeline of rolling out an effective community engagement in public education campaign regarding cleanliness within our city?
Good morning. This is Alejandra Ivanovich for the, representing the Department of Public Works. Our chief of solid waste could not make it today, but I'll be more than happy to get back to you with that answer, Councilwoman.
Outside of DPW answering that question, it was something that was also relayed during the hearing. Is that something that the administration would be able to speak to? Have you had conversations since that hearing about a public education program as well as a full-blown community engagement strategy with DPW's over the last, what, three weeks since we had it?
Yeah, I follow with you, Councilwoman, because as you know, I actually wasn't here doing that hearing, but I do know that that is something that has been flagged for the city administrator to look into in terms of ensuring that we are effectively communicating to city residents around the importance of properly disposing of trash and the proper receptacles and using their city-issue trash cans, as well as just general awareness around rat abatement and what homeowners and renters can do around their properties to make the environment less appealing to rats, because we know that rats are where there is a food source. So, you know, agree that there is a need for public education and awareness, and we'll go back to the city administrator and get an update for you on where we are with that.
Okay, I'll look forward to it. Very short question for Wreck and Parks. I just wanted to understand more about your funding request that you actually spoke of earlier. I just wanted to understand more about your funding request that you actually spoke of earlier. Knowing that, again, one of these goals are about how are we going to maintain our parks once we put these parks up? I have a number of new parks and we're constantly trying to stay on board about, hey, this is getting trashed. We need new trash cans because folks are, are using them. So what exactly is your funding request that you spoke of earlier?
Councilwoman, it's not a specific request. It was just that we keep in mind while we're looking at these things. And we're working on a comprehensive plan, the um, the playbook that we've been referencing with you all for the last year or so. Um, Capitol, Kate Brower in particular is working really closely with DOP. And that plan isn't finished yet, but it is um, referenced heavily in the report. And um, and there is language in there that says, you know, one of the things that we are looking at is, is the continuing the conversation for funding strategies, identifying sources and whatever. Um, I probably shouldn't have put that in the report because it was identified generally in their plan, but I had, was asked to. So it is, it is something that's being addressed as we move that plan forward.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I, one comment and then the question. The comment um, for DPW, I just wanna, I, I know, Kim, you had mentioned you had started work groups. And I just wanna thank you, uh, you and Yolanda Winkler for the problems that were really happening around uh, the Weinhurst community and that stream and the flooding. Uh, just a clear example of um, what my colleague, Councilman Burnett, had mentioned about areas that really weren't designated um, terrible areas. But as you kind of started that work group, um, I think it has really started to uh, help the community to understand what's going on around the city and um, appreciate uh, the start of uh, that dialogue and hoping it continues. Um, my question is kind of, uh, it's, it's a question where um, I guess anyone or everyone can kind of answer for their own area. But um, there, it, it all comes together. And I want to start with uh, the and how, how you have um, sectioned out, you know, the different ways to make a healthy community, uh, whether it's for safety, um, the health disparities, neighborhood cleanliness. And for me, all of that, in a sense, focuses around neighborhood cleanliness. Um, and we as council members, we always um, direct our constituents to 311. And I think that there's still a lot of problems with the 311 system. And trying to get our residents to understand when the word "closed" comes up, we, we just constantly get that over and over again. They think it's completely closed. They think it doesn't go to another agency. And I remember um, having a hearing trying to, years ago, trying to get that resolved or change the language. And I really think that that would be a good step in trying to help our residents to understand the importance of calling 311 and not just saying the word "closed." It's just, um, I, I have uh, back and forth conversations with my constituents that I shouldn't be doing. The process, the process of all this is just so very important. Um, I, I wanted to mention that, but I also, you know, I, under neighborhood cleanliness, I see your words increase, increase, increase. I, I'd like at least some of the agencies to explain, what have you, what are you doing? Or what do you plan to do differently to help keep our neighborhoods clean? Help our communities to um, help them keep the neighborhoods clean? I mean, we're all, we all have to do this together. We have short staff. We, you know, there's a lack of communication still between agencies. And I find that we as council members are the ones still using time to bring all this together. And at the end of the day, that's not our job. We are legislators, but we do it so we can get things moving. Not to discredit what agencies are doing, but letting you know that this is a problem. It's a big, huge problem. And if we don't correct or um, try to figure out what each of your agencies are doing to increase um, resources, to help our communities, we're, we're not going anywhere. We, the goal is to try to get more residents to come and live in our city. And I think all that is focused around cleaning vacant properties, cleaning um, uh, streets like Garrison Boulevard, where there has been a history of prostitution, history of, we all have areas in our neighborhoods where we have history of drug use. Um, all of that is unsafe conditions. Uh, we, give us, give us some hope that you are communicating with, with each other. You have um, you have some plans, some ideas in place. I want, you know, we're here on public TV that um, residents look at. Give me and us some things that you are doing or you are planning to do, some success things that are working. Um, at the end of the day, remember, we all are in here and we work for the people. So times like this is a chance to share some of those positive things that are, are happening. And I'll stop there. Any, I, I,
Yeah, I mean, Councilwoman, I can start. I mean, look, Mayor Scott is obviously committed to ensuring a cleaner, greener, healthier Baltimore city, right? It's laid out in his uh, action plan uh, that was released when he became mayor in 2020. Um, shameless plug that the annual fall cleanup is coming up as well, right? And it'll be hit in multiple different areas across the city. Um, and want to ensure that, you know, city residents know uh, how to participate um, in those cleanups um, as they move around their neighborhoods. Um, you can call 311 or go to baltimorecity.gov/mayor/annualfallcleanup to register. And the registration is closed on uh, October 21st. That's one. The mayor has also made significant investments in the Clean Core Program, as you know, right, where we are directly empowering those who live in the neighborhoods uh, to be responsible for cleaning up and um, managing some of the vacant lots that are in the area. And then, you know, beautifying those lots as well, um, so as to not have eyesores in the community. Uh, when it comes to cleanliness and crime and grime, right, I think that you're pointing to an issue that we have to continue to address holistically, right? And the mayor has said it, it's an all-hands-on-deck. Every city agency has a role to play um, in this. You're talking about the police department for addressing any crime that's being committed. You're talking about DHCD for enforcing code violations um, and ensuring that particularly on Garrison, right, that our businesses have the education and awareness to know that they shouldn't allow people to solicit various things, right, in front of their establishments, right? But also making sure that we are, and that our police department is continuing to police um, in a manner that is constitutional, right? And so we are not just clearing corners, you know, those days are long gone um, for the Baltimore Police Department, right? We're getting out, we're connecting with the community, we're connecting folks to resources. Um, we go out on these walks, right, as issues are raised um, in different neighborhoods where we do see that there is a need for a comprehensive plan and to get all of the agencies in the space to not only read about it in the email, but to see it for themselves and to address some of the short-term things immediately and to go back and strategize and come back to the respective council member with a long-term strategy to address some of the more pervasive issues, right? And in your case on Garrison Boulevard, such as prostitution, right? There are several underlying reasons for why a person may decide that that is the way that they want to make money, right? And when we were out there, we engaged with several individuals who just clearly indicated that they weren't ready, right, to accept resources. And it was shared with them that, you know, you take the resources or you deal with the repercussions of your actions, right? So it's this carrot and stick response um, that we are continuing to balance. Same thing for those who we um, who are dealing with the opioid addiction, right? And being able to hand out Narcan and being able to connect them to resources, but they have to be willing to take those resources, right? So again, it's holistic, it's all hands-on deck. We do the fall cleanups uh, to address cleanliness. Um, do still want to encourage residents that if you do see a dirty alley, if you do see uh, uh, trash in the gutters filling your um, uh, what do you call it? Storm drains, right, that you do put that into 311. And that we will ensure that agencies will address those cleanliness concerns. And for the council, want to ensure that you know that you can flag any 311 requests that has lapsed directly with the city administrator, right? She's put together a team to look into this "closed means closed" situation that is going on. Um, and there will be a plan released closer to the end of term around what it looks like to, you know, work through that, right? So these are big, high-level issues that the administration is going to continue to address in partnership with all of the city agencies from their uh, respective purchase. Uh, but do want to be sure that it is clear that the mayor is committed to cleaner, greener, healthier neighborhoods and that we will continue to address and tackle these issues um, as they arise and do a better job at being proactive.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Councilwoman. Um, so, you know, adding on what everyone has said here, we, you know, we recognize and I think in our bill of response, we acknowledge the um, important priority of a number of these things. The fact of the matter is, is that we are a jurisdiction that does continue to be um, challenge. We're a high-tax jurisdiction. Um, and we do continue to grapple with ensuring that our budget is in structural budget balance. One of the initiatives that we're very focused on in, in finance is supporting the effort to increase the annual uh, geo-borrowing or general obligation borrowing, that's part of the capital budget, from our current baseline of $80 million up to $200 million within the next 10 years. I think that will be in a, a major step forward to um, ensuring that we're able to make meaningful capital investments in our community and that we're also able to come in, start a project and complete a project in a realistic amount of time, rather than having these really long windows for doing major capital improvements in our community. That being said, additional resources for a number of these items that are called out in this plan that are above and beyond what we're doing today or above and beyond what can be accommodated in that additional geo-borrowing will be difficult to fund. Um, and I will note that, um, you know, any of the, there are a number of recommendations in this plan that deviate from sort of the, the core mission of the comp plan and, and sort of um, get into op- uh, operations of city services. And if we want to fully implement those recommendations, we're going to have to look for a recurring way to fund those new programs. And what that means is that we either have to identify new recurring sources of revenue or we have to identify new recurring um, cost savings or cuts that can be implemented in order to offset the additional costs.
Uh, thank you for that. We um, are looking forward to the new revenue, but um, I don't like to hear the word "cut." Um, planning, would you, uh, I'd like to hear from you since you're the lead basically in putting this together. What have you kind of done with the other agencies as you're working on this plan?
Right, we worked with agencies to develop the policy recommendations and review input that we got from communities. And also, um, you talked about celebrating things that we're already doing. The plan highlights current efforts. So for example, for neighborhood cleanliness, there's more than a half dozen different topics, including some of the ones that were mentioned, such as clean chlor, community cleanups, alley cleanups, et cetera, that are highlighted in the plan, um, as well as recommendations that are identified to take those to the next level. So either to increase the efforts of things that we're already doing or to try out some new strategies. As uh, the finance director, as the budget director mentioned, you know, some of those are going to require some choices about where do we put our resources? And so if we want to pursue some of those new ideas, then we need to make some choices about kind of what's the priority. But the plan identifies a menu of ideas that we can pull from um, as we're thinking about how to address these topics.
And lastly, uh, Mr. Chair, how are you connecting uh, businesses like CSX that really in my eyes have not been pleasant in the, in all of our neighborhoods? Because that's where they travel through. Um, not just CSX, but there are, you know, large and small businesses that um, have not been good neighbors. And some, in some cases make matters worse. How are you connecting and working with them?
Well, I think outside of um, our positive outreach to them at every opportunity we can, uh, I think we share some of your concerns, especially with CSX in particular. Um, but the ability to control a private business outside of enforcement mechanisms, we're limited in what we can do through this comprehensive plan, unfortunately. Uh, so outside of education and outreach, I don't know that we have too many other tools that we can use to get private businesses.
The, the plan does include a freight movement section and it does include some recommendations about, um, you know, having um, a way to collect uh, issues that people have around CSX and to try and kind of like coordinate on those so that people aren't, you know, dealing with CSX as a neighbor on their own. Um, so we do have some, uh, limited, but some, um, some recommendations in the freight movement section.
And I bring that up because um, the trans-oriented communities or neighborhoods, as you notice, we're building um, apartments and things near uh, some of those areas so people can commute on our, you know, light rail and so on. And, you know, it's, they have really been a terrible problem. So I, I think that's something that really needs to be almost at the top of a, of some kind of list to um, try to um, move in a positive direction. Um, Tyler, I think it was something you wanted to add from your mannerism.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, if, if there are any specific businesses, external partners um, that you share those with uh, me and Nina, right? We can work with Deputy Mayor Williams and his team uh, to do some outreach and to, you know, have intentional conversations around being better partners uh, to surrounding communities.
Thank you. Colleagues, any other questions for our city agencies? Councilman Dorsey?
Um, yeah, there's lots of questions. Um, there is uh, various parts of the plan that pertain to transit-oriented development. And I think that there's a fairly, I, I mean, I think there's no disagreement about what our traditional sense of transit-oriented development is, right? It tends to just be, where are there rail lines somewhere? And build around that. But I think that there has over, in recent years, been a recognition that like, if buses are going to continue to be our primary mode of public transportation in the city, and that they, look, they, they run along the same routes that our streetcar system did, you know, 60, 70 years ago, and it served half the population much better than the bus system serves half the population today. And that that was a time when there was more population and And that that was a time when there was more population and, uh, kind of more density per household and, and more population in the city in general. Um, it seems to me like our transit, our sense of transit, transit-oriented development needs to have evolved to recognize our, at least our high-frequency network, the frequent transit network, as a basis for transit-oriented development. But I don't see that reflected in the plan.
Uh, Transit Oriented Development Opportunities Map goes beyond our existing rail lines and includes future rail, um, for the red line, but also includes, um, some bus lines where there is either, um, high ridership or there's proposed infrastructure improvements. So for example, along New York Road Corridor, along the North Avenue Corridor, um, I believe there's at least one other one. So we are looking beyond just rail.
It's, what are those parameters for looking at future, you said, in, future infrastructure?
So it includes, uh, North Avenue Rising Raise Project for express bus service, the East-West Raise Project for express bus service, uh, future north-south transit project and the current MTA CityLink Red Bus Route. Those are, um, that, that has the highest ridership route in the system. So those were some of the ones that we, uh, that we included in addition to the rail lines.
And I guess, was there a discussion of or decision not to just simply include the frequent transit network? That includes a lot more than, than those few.
I think you would have, um, a, a map that maybe included the entire city if you included the entire bus network, so this is really highlighting the...
I, I have this map. It doesn't, I mean, it, yes, it touches on all parts of the city and I think that's why it's really important to recognize that, that we need better development throughout the city in order to be able to support better bus ridership throughout the city and to get more people to, you know, become bus riders or move to the city believing that they can depend on the bus. It's dependent on them being able to move to neighborhoods that, that can adequately support bus infrastructure. I mean, yes, it, that's the point of the frequent transit network, is that it reaches the whole city, um, but it doesn't touch on every block of every street by any stretch. I mean, it's, at the end of the day, it's like ten percent of the, the city would be in what you might consider a TOD zone if you just took into account the frequent transit network.
Um, these were identified as a starting point. We can certainly continue to have a conversation about kind of where do we go from here. Um, but I think over the next ten years, um, building out development that is, uh, higher intensity around these transit stations is, um, a very, um, a lofty goal. And, um, and then we can kind of move, uh, move further over the next ten years and beyond.
I think that that really strikes at my deepest concern about the plan. Um, as I read through the sections on equitable development, let, let me just, there's a quote that I took a note of from a book a couple of days ago. If you have any interest in housing justice and you haven't read The Color of Law and you're sitting in this room and you pay attention and care enough, you should probably read The Color of Law. And then you should read the follow-up to Color of Law called Just Action, which addresses how we desegregate, um, through action. And, uh, these both, books are both written by Richard Rothstein. Um, and in the very outset of Just Action, there is a discussion of two forms of kind of how we see just housing opportunity pursued. Um, and that is through place-based option, options versus, or place-based strategies versus mobility-based strategies. And what I'm seeing in the plan here is just like a completely place-based side approach. Like only ever fix the neighborhoods that are broken, which absolutely need to be addressed. Only ever address the neighborhoods that are the most disadvantaged, but also do nothing to expand opportunity in the most advantaged neighborhoods. There are no strategies to, to substantially expand opportunity in high-opportunity neighborhoods. And so, you know, addressing EBDI, addressing other longstanding project areas of, of concern is all entirely place-based approach. There's nothing, and, and the, the reason why I think TOD, expanding beyond just a few project areas that maybe also align with these other place-based strategies, is that it really doesn't emphasize in any way, or reemphasizes this way, in a way, that we're not looking for expanded opportunities in high-opportunity areas. I think that that's, I don't know, maybe you can speak to this, I'm being broad here, but this is my biggest concern with this plan.
Hey, Councilman, I, I think that some of the, some of the concerns that you raised may also be addressed in the, um, the Comprehensive Housing Plan that the city is working on right now, right? I think we all in this chamber understand that Baltimore City is the birthplace of redlining. Um, and, you know, under Mayor Scott, right, we've put forth numerous, numerous efforts to begin to turn the corner and right those wrongs, right? Like the three billion dollar vacant strategy, uh, that was recently announced in the TIF that will be before the, before this council, um, in committee soon, right? We understand these, uh, different pieces of this issue. Um, and like I said, the mayor has put forth several policies, right? And we'll begin to overcome that legacy. Um, and so what that plan is going to do is bring a lot of these pieces together into one comprehensive housing plan that will address some of the issues that you just raised, particularly around development and how we look at development in an equitable manner to ensure access to transportation, access to employment, access to educational opportunities, and all of these different pieces of this.
Respectfully, that TIF is not going to impact high-opportunity neighborhoods basically in any way, right? That TIF is not going to make for any new housing opportunity in the district that I represent, or largely in the districts of some of my colleagues here. It's not going to make a lick of difference. It's only focusing further in these place-based areas. It's, it's further concentrating our efforts in those place-based areas. It's not in any way about pursuing a mobility strategy to housing equity. There's a whole section in here in equi-, on equitable, uh, access and equitable neighborhood development, but it's only about building up neighborhoods that are under-resourced and in no way focuses on helping people to move to neighborhoods that are higher-resourced. And it's a ten-year plan that is looked at as the way we, look, I also need to acknowledge, I am thankful to Sarah and staff for working with me on the land use map, um, section for my district. We incorporated, I think, some good map changes in there that do look at how we plan for change along a high-frequency transit corridor. Um, but at the same time, when I look at the housing opportunity, the housing growth opportunity that we're missing, the plan cites the numbers, what is it? Fifty-three-hundred to seventy-one-hundred new households could be the amount that we increase each year. And it looks at twenty, was it twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen until twenty-twenty-four? It says that in this time, we've developed, I think, eighteen thousand new households in the city and that that average is out to be forty-five-hundred new households per year over that duration. So not only do we know that the household, the dwelling production is not meeting the market demand, but we also know that over that time, we actually lost population. So it's probably not even like fifty percent of the housing development that we needed in order to be able to grow our population commensurate with the market demand that exists. And when I look at the plan and I see that the consideration of opportunity for growth is essentially limited to city-owned properties and vacant properties and properties that are underutilized, but fairly limited in that definition to places that have parking lots on them, basically, I think we're really missing the practical aspect of what it takes to turn any property around into new development. And I think that that really needs to be considered on a citywide scale, not on the simple place-based scale of the focus areas that are outlined. And I think that if we fail to look at this, um, because here's the other part of this. So they talk about, Rothstein talks about place-based versus mobility strategies and he says, "Housing policy experts debate whether place-based strategies are best. Our view is that we have such a long way to go before we've taken sufficient steps toward the meaningful remedy of segregation that we can't afford to be choosy. Every little bit helps." And when I'm looking at a situation like Baltimore's in, where we have opportunity for growth and we have a ten-year plan in front of us, and I know that we could be growing in the course of ten years, but we're employing essentially strictly a place-based strategy and not a mobility-based strategy, I have deep reservations about the sufficiency of the plan to guide us over the next ten years.
I just wanted to add, um, a couple other, um, components of the plan. You highlighted, um, the new residential development opportunities, which look citywide at, um, opportunities for new development in every area of the city. So they're not limited just to areas where we have city-owned land or just where we have vacant land, but identifies that potential and highlights that for the development community, that these, uh, development opportunities exist with today's zoning. And then the plan includes the land use map where there's increased opportunities, um, for new development. Uh, the plan also includes, uh, the, a reference to the housing market typology and, um, provides examples of strategies for every area of the city. So it's looking at areas, um, that are areas of high opportunity and what the strategies are for those areas, as well as, um, the other housing market types. Um, one of those key strategies is our middle neighborhood strategies, which are outlined, um, in the plan as well, which I think are some of the areas that you're referring to that are, um, higher-opportunity areas that are vulnerable, but, um, where we're making, uh, important investments. Um, we look at new development opportunities on the residential side, as well as some major developments that are, that are in the pipeline. So I think, um, there are definitely components of the plan that are focused on some of our areas that, you know, need the most investment, but there are, um, items included in the plan that, that look at high-opportunity areas as well.
I appreciate that. And again, I want to reiterate, um, I'm thankful for the discourse I had several months ago and the inclusion of certain things that I thought were important in the land use map. And I'm not going to say anything that you haven't heard, heard already, but I think it's important for me to reiterate this, um, what I said to Sarah and planning staff several months ago, that in these high-opportunity areas, essentially, correct me if I'm wrong, but essentially, the high-opportunity area development opportunity is actually limited in kind of consideration to vacant land or properties where there are vacant building notices, which are, exist in very, 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 very low numbers in high-opportunity areas. It's almost non-existent in high-opportunity areas, so it's almost a non-existent element. And properties that are underutilized, but often these underutilized properties are underutilized in a sustainable manner. They're a parking lot because it's owned by a church that doesn't have to pay property taxes for it to exist from that now to eternity. And so there's no chance that that parking lot, or little to no chance that that, that parking lot is ever going to turn around. It's, you know, uh, it's a parking lot that's associated with, uh, a giant car parts place that is going to stay there until people stop buying car parts. And so there's little to no chance that that parking lot is going away. It's a giant parking lot associated with a, you know, something else. It's, this is the, the limited idea of underutilized property. And when you take into practical account all of these practical barriers, it's a kind of business or it's a kind of property owner that isn't going to go away, that is probably going to stay there for the next twenty or thirty years, that property, that, that underutilized property is probably not going to change. Um, you know, when you take into account the, the vacant buildings that, you know, maybe somebody's going to make a minor investment in to bring back into usable condition, but it's not going to substantially alter the landscape of the area. When you take into account all the practical barriers to growth at any substantial scale, looking at those areas that the plan suggests are the opportunities for growth is just insufficient to realistically bring about because those conditions already exist today in high-opportunity areas. These conditions of vacancy or underutilization already exist today and the rate at which they are changing is almost non-existent. And so you have to look beyond that, and that's what the plan doesn't do. It doesn't look beyond, basically, what can you already do today by and large. That's why I think it's also really important to acknowledge TOD beyond, at, at least TOD needs to be recognized for the entire frequent transit network because we need more housing near those areas the most. I can go on, but I won't. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Burnett, do you have any more questions?
I do. Thank you, Madam Chair. so no, we don't. Uh, we let the police department go, uh, so I guess I'll direct my questions to planning on the SEP TED, uh, section, uh, Designing for Public Safety, um, which I don't actually think we need police here to discuss because a lot of this is sort of environmental design. Um, can you speak to, um, how the, the department is working with our public safety agencies, Monzi and the police department, uh, to look at crime trends in sort of the context of future construction or development, um, to figure out where these sort of strategies could best be implemented? This is something I've, this body's so interested in and I've, as well. Uh, we've, uh, tried to utilize these strategies in my district and just sort of at the very micro level, working with our local department to identify, you know, where streetlights may be out or, uh, where just better lighting could be useful, uh, and other sort of tactics to, uh, make areas less, um, opportune for crime to take place. Can you speak on this strategy and sort of where the conversations have been so far?
Yeah. I don't know if the mayor's office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement is here. Okay, we worked with, um, with their office on this section and they can provide more, uh, more details in a follow-up if you're interested, but there are efforts currently underway, um, for a pilot study in the Boyd Booth community. Um, I don't know if they've, if you've been, um, part of that. Um, and they've been, uh, leading a multi-agency effort, um, to bring together, um, police department, housing authority, transportation, you know, other agencies to work on, um, various different, uh, aspects, um, including blight elimination, traffic patterns and calming, anti-lordering signage, surveillance measures, uh, maintenance, patrols, um, increasing social presence, um, really the whole idea to, you know, create that, um, sense of ownership. Um, so that's what they're starting with, is that, um, that pilot study and then, um, seeing kind of what they learn from there and, and how to move forward.
what they learn from there and, and how to move forward.
Thank you. The second question I had is the last section of the bill talks about city schools and increasing both readiness, I guess in the educational setting, but also for employment and post-secondary education. Can we talk about that a little bit, particularly, I would say in the context of what my colleagues were just discussing around TOD, you know, we have Edmonton Avenue was a part of that red line corridor, still is, with the project seemingly back in line. I think that there's an opportunity to coordinate with, you know, the local school that has a trade program with folks that are going to be doing a large-scale development where those skills could be utilized. How's the planning department, I guess, working in lockstep where you may see something coming to a particular community that, that may fit into the curriculum, BCPS curriculum for students that are on their way into the working world?
Yeah, that was, I think that goes a little bit beyond what we had thought of, but I think that's an excellent suggestion. We worked primarily with the mayor's office of employment development on the workforce development section. Obviously, schools is an important piece of that and getting, you know, students ready to move into the workforce world. We've also been working with the mayor's office of infrastructure development. They have been kind of looking at where some major development projects are on the horizon and sort of how can we tee up for training for, you know, local workforce to, to be able to participate in some of those. But we can extend that to schools, thinking about some of those projects as well.
Yeah, I think it makes a lot of sense. I mean, we just, again, Edmonton has trade, like, you know, construction trades, we have construction, and oftentimes a lot of young people are graduating trying to figure out what's next. And I think where we can think through pipelines, because again, the, just running back to the red line, like, you know, it's a few years out of construction. There's, at the earliest, we're talking maybe 10 years. That's, I think ample time and probably two or three graduating classes in the pipe where we could be setting, you know, young people up, knowing both the scope of work of that project into what I would say is a pretty family-supporting wage job that would sustain them and allow them to get back to the community that they live in, because most of those students do live in that, along that corridor. So I think the pride of being able to build something or be a part of building something that you live in and that being the jumpstart into that career, I think, is a smart way to think about how we do development, where we do development, and how we can maximize the impact for our citizens. So it'd be great to have that conversation. That was all I had, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Burnett. And I guess just to add to what you just said, a good example is as far as creating, helping to create that workforce, you know, Park Heights Renaissance has their Clean and Green Team and they're doing like, I call it pre-apprenticeship type things to connect with these people with city government and, you know, it's a pipeline for jobs and that has been working very successfully. Thank the mayor for helping to get them a building to do the, you know, that beginning legwork and using the community of Park Heights as the start of that process. So I'm, it's things like that that I think are just so important and other agencies need to look at some of those examples. Councilwoman McCray.
Madam Chair, I just have a quick comment and then I do have a quick question. To my, to my colleague's earlier point, only six out of 427 pages of this plan is dedicated to middle neighborhoods and they are a high opportunity neighborhoods. As you all know, from the hearings that I previously held, from me constantly uplifting middle neighborhoods, and I'm happy about that there is some type of strategy, but again, it's just, it's six pages and half of those pages are just explaining what middle neighborhoods are within the plan. And we do need to do more to hold these neighborhoods together. And this is explained in the plan within three pages of the six on why it's important. For me, one thing that we, that has not been said during this hearing is about retention of residents. We were talking about bringing residents in to the city, but the retention of residents, especially our legacy residents in my neighborhoods, that's going to be our black legacy residents is very important to me. For my question, one item that I also did not see within the plan, and it goes back to what I spoke about earlier, about a full-blown community engagement and public awareness campaign, is nothing in this plan regarding the cleanliness of neighborhoods in a public awareness campaign or program. That's not mentioned in any of the goals within there. And my question, and this, this is likely a request, I'm, I'm looking for a, a cost of what it would be for us to have that community, a full-blown community engagement strategy, and also a public awareness campaign about cleanliness. It's one of the one things that I would push back with our finance department. That's not a heavy lift for that public awareness campaign. And when we talk about retention, that's something that I do feel like is going to pay off, especially knowing that within my middle neighborhoods and Northeast community, that's one-third of those property taxes that fuel our budget. So the request is, what would the cost be? So when you guys follow up about the program and what that looks like, I also want to know what is the cost. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and I agree, that's a very good point, especially since we, your first comment about the legacy residents, especially since we have a new office of aging and, you know, again, it's another important partnership that you can work together and communicate together to accomplish a number of these performance measures that you list. And, and I also agree with you that the cost is, you know, a marketing cost for things like this is so important because when you're doing public awareness, you're teaching indirectly residents on a, a process of how to do things.
Madam Chair, if I may, I just want to clarify to make sure that the, the request is for the cost for a comprehensive public awareness campaign specifically around the master plan in addition to the cleanliness or specific to middle neighborhoods.
I want a, I want a cost for what it would be for a full-blown community engagement program that includes a public awareness campaign related to the cleanliness of our neighborhoods within the city, not just middle neighborhoods. We know that middle neighborhoods actually make up the vast majority of the neighborhoods within the city. So I want, I want a, I want a cost on that. Got it.
And I think you can, I think something that would be helpful would to go back to looking at what comes into 3-1-1 as well, a number of the issues that seem to be repeated but not resolved in a, in a real form or a real process.
And, and these are 3-1-1s related to cleanliness? Okay.
And that's, you know, it all goes back to sanitation, picking up trash, all the aspects of keeping a neighborhood clean, why a, why there's a park where we continue to find needles and, and, you know, things where our children or, or older adults, anyone won't go into, that things like that shouldn't be happening. They should be a priority because they're part of helping a community to thrive and helping people to want to stay in those areas.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
During, during the hearing, it wasn't my hearing, I was just facilitating it, but it was, you know, it's an important topic for me. So that was maybe about, what, three weeks ago that that hearing was held. There were a number of committee requests related to 3-1-1s, specifically about what Madam Chair is referring to. If we could just follow up on a request from the hearing that took place, I think we can get some of the questions related to the 3-1-1 inquiries.
Got it, yeah. And, and if you, do you have those by any chance? Like I said, I was out, but I'll follow up with my team to see kind of where we are with those.
If you could work with my office and the, and the committee staff, Mr. Hayes, for the HAC committee regarding those outstanding requests.
Got it, and this came up during the RAB, the RAB, the RAB hearing?
The RAB, RAB mitigation hearing that was sponsored by Councilwoman Porter. Thank you.
And just one more thing that came to mind that I think we should somehow include somewhere in this plan, you know, there still seems to be a problem in the city on why we continue to, we know why we have to accept group homes and of all different sorts and, and people, we say the same thing over again, you know, we have nothing against the need of these different types of homes, but they are starting to just change the makeup of a, of a neighborhood. We shouldn't have three, four, five group homes in, you know, one, two-block radius. It's not going to go away and we need to put that conversation or something in the plan to try to correct that. I don't know if it's more enforcement or whatever, but it's going to become a issue. It's already become an issue and I think if we don't work on it, it's going to get worse. Any comments about that?
Well, as a lane use issue, I think we have to have a conversation with law department to see what options may exist. I worry that they may be limited. Again, in a lot of cases, zoning is the easiest tool to find and amend and is nearly always the wrong tool. It's almost always licensing, and I believe that comes from the state. So we'll need to look into that to see what options may exist, but having number limitations, I think, is going to be problematic from a lane use perspective, and I'll defer to law if they have any other off-the-cuff ideas.
I agree, it's a conversation needed with state and the federal government, our partners, because I'm feeling like Baltimore City is setting as an example, basically, for the country with what's going on. So we need to have some efforts to really start working on that. Councilman Dorsey.
I'm just curious about this. The equitable access transportation section mentions the separated lane network, the bicycle plan for the city. But then there's the section that touches on the Greenway Trails Network that says plans affecting our city. I don't have it in front of me, I think I have that right. What's the choice, thought process in putting those in these different sections? To me, like, if we're actually committed to the bike network, which seems hard to argue we are at the moment, if we're actually committed to the bike network, I would hope that that would also be characterized as plans affecting our city. And the whole explanation of the Greenway Trails Network in the plan seems to present it as creating equitable access so that these things could have either been in either places.
It's, the, the plan shaping the city section is where we have the, the more geographically focused components of the plan. So we have a map showing the, the proposed Greenway Trail in that section as a citywide plan that has, you know, geographically specific, you know, there's a map of the Greenway Trails and so forth. So that's, that's just why it landed there.
We do have a map for the bicycle network though.
The...
But it's not shown, I don't think.
So the, this plan really serves as an umbrella for many other plans, and we've identified dozens of other plans, including that one, in this plan. This plan kind of brings all of the plans together without repeating the recommendations in those other plans. So we don't have a separate plan for the Greenway Trails, we're highlighting that map here.
Got you, okay. Thank you. I'm finished.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, at this point, we are in recess. Oh, not yet, I'm skipping. We have two people that have signed up to testify in person.
Oh, Madam Chair, I have a question on this point, I'm sorry.
That's okay, go ahead.
We did not receive any letters in support or opposition, either in our packets or on, there's nothing on Legistar. Was there no written public comment?
We just received one today.
Okay. And I know that planning did extensive outreach on this. What was the volume like of written submissions and testimony for the planning commission hearing?
For the commission hearing itself, Eric could answer, but prior to the planning commission, we had a 60-day comment period from May 30th to July 30th, and we received over 2,000 comments.
Yeah.
Some were, you know, high-level in the form of letters, and many of them were very specific, you know, identifying suggestions or, or feedback on specific pieces of the plan. We went through all of those and made hundreds of revisions based on those comments.
So to answer the question, we had three letters, two of which were diametrically opposed to each other in the same neighborhood. So that was the extent. I think because of that extensive outreach leading up to the final copy that was presented to the planning commission is the reason why we didn't have so much more.
Okay.
And we do have the one letter on file here that's basically from a resident on a, a resident of Wyman Park South, and basically it's a specific issue on runoff and sewage pollution and so on. We'll make sure you get a, planning gets a copy of that letter as well, so I'm sure more will be coming in for file.
Yeah, if planning could, would you please forward us the letters that you received? I think, I know personally, sometimes when I've got a bill that's got to come to planning commission and then committee, I'm doing a bunch to, hey, get my constituents to send in things to planning commission, and then it's like work to get a committee hearing scheduled, and then I'm like just wrapped up in that and I don't ask them to resubmit their letters to the committee. And they all feel like they've already done their part because they put it in for planning commission. So if we could have those forwarded to us, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have two people that have signed up to testify in person. The first one is from Utah Neighbors, Dara. Dara, okay. I couldn't, sorry, I couldn't read your last name.
My name is Dolph Druckmann, I'm a neighbor on Utah and also in Bolton Hill. I wanted to first start out by thanking the chair, Mr. Costello, who's not here, and also correct the record if there was any misunderstanding that I had between him before this hearing. I take full responsibility for that. I'm here basically on a point of process, not content. I fully support Mr. Dorsey's question on how much comment and how much neighborhood participation has been in this process. It's my viewpoint as a recipient of the planning council's emails for the past two years that there's been very little announcement or, or process. I, I do believe there's been significant effort, but that effort has occurred but that effort has occurred within a planning bubble. Uh, I think there's been significant effort, um, to invite the public, but that's only gone in some very limited directions to folks who are actively involved or who have special interests in the plan. So as a point of process, uh, I'm basically here to say there's an opportunity to not proceed with this plan and to, uh, uh, request extensions from the state. There is no, there is no emergency for passing this plan right now. And if there has been such Herculean effort in the past...
We're not voting on this today.
I, I know, but I, I would, I would, I'm, I'm here to, to suggest that some brakes need to be put onto the process, uh, a- 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 as a point, as a point of, um...
Suggestion noted.
Uh, a- a- as a point of, uh, uh, process. And it's just that it's, uh, it promises legacy changes, and anything that promises legacy changes really needs to have much closer inspection, and that's why I'm here. And thank you mu- thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, for the opportunity. And, and what I want to talk about is that land use map, because that is what, um, stands out to me as a, as really the, the critical and most consequential feature of this. It's a, the land use map is a brand-new feature of the Comprehensive Plan. And I know that Planning wants you to adopt it, and they want you to adopt it without amendments, and they want you to adopt it in this session. And they want you apparently to put a moratorium on amendments for the next, at least for the first year of the new City Council session. And we really need to understand what that means. I know there is out there, information out there circulating to make people believe the land use map could be shrugged off as something to be looked at or worried about or thought about later. What I am seeing, however, is that an adopted land use map actually holds power over the future, and that now is really the time to get it right. We need to understand exactly what can happen after a land use map is adopted, including how it will be implemented through comprehensive rezoning, whether it's the entire city or just a portion of a neighborhood being comprehensive rezoned, comprehensively rezoned. On the map, every property is placed in a category that corresponds to a set of zones from the current zoning code. Zones, of course, determine things like dwelling unit density, permitted uses, what part of a lot can, can't be built on, what we and our neighbors can and can't do. On the map, each category is made up of one, two, three, or four zones. Now, since comprehensive rezoning is what implements the plan, and the plan includes map, won't comprehensive rezoning have to be consistent with the map? And if so, doesn't the adoption of this land use map control and limit what happens under the comprehensive rezoning that will come? We need to understand the scheme, we need to understand how it works. There's a map category that includes only R5 and R6. Won't properties placed in that category be limited in the future to R5 and R6? Won't the R6 zone be unavailable to a property that's placed in the category that includes R7, R8, R9, and R10? Some properties have been placed on the map in a category that does not include their current zone. Some properties that are now in an R-zone have been placed in a category that does not include any R-zone. This is something that has happened in my neighborhood. It has caught us by surprise, and as you can imagine, legacy homeowners on blocks that have always been zoned residential could never have expected that a land use map would designate their block for something different. And they were not even notified, they had no notification. So, you know, can you imagine what that's like? Can you imagine the questions when they discover that that's what is being proposed? They want to know, what does this mean? So, and it's clear to me that adopting a land use map now and prohibiting amendments for the first year or so of the new session, which is what I believe the bill says, it's going to be consequential. It looks like the land use map can mean opportunity for some and harm for others. And we need a thorough understanding of the scheme for everybody to understand, not just the insiders and the real estate speculators and the developers who already understand it. And also, there's a question and whether adopting this map without advance notice to individual property owners, since notice is a comprehensive rezoning requirement, would notice, would adopting this map now constitute a taking or other kind of infraction? If the contents of this new feature, this brand-new land use map feature, will effectively control and limit what can happen under comprehensive rezoning, shouldn't owners be notified now? It seems like notices that will be mailed in the future will be too late to give owners, um, warning or understanding of limitations that are really already imposed on their property. These are all questions, I hope that, that there will be answered on the record. I hope the Law Department will come in, and everybody will understand exactly what, you know, what is being proposed and how the future is going to look as a result. There is a way to avoid these problems. The gentleman just spoke about, um, putting the brakes on. A way to avoid these problems is to consider both the Comprehensive Master Plan and the Comprehensive rezoning at the same time, which in fact is what some Maryland jurisdictions do. I'm familiar with that. But at the very least, we need a clear understanding of what can happen next, and we're going to need some amendments to the land use map. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony, points well taken.
Uh, Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
I, I'd like, um, Mr. T. Soto to kind of speak to, first, the public engagement that was a part of the plan, and then secondarily, to some of his thinking around where we're going in terms of, uh, comprehensive rezoning and what that plan looks like.
Perfect way to wrap up.
Sure, and actually, uh, did you want to start with the public piece, and I can come in at the end?
Yeah, in terms of engagement, we have been, uh, working on the plan since the spring of 2022, um, and we were very purposeful in the engagement. We held focus groups in advance of starting the plan to talk to residents about how to approach the planning process. And, um, people were very clear that we needed to make sure that we were bringing the plan, uh, to them, not having meetings, you know, downtown, not asking people, uh, to come to the Planning Department, but both bringing it to them physically in terms of having meetings, um, in neighborhoods, but also in terms of who the messenger was, that it should really be trusted voices in the community. And so from the beginning, we partnered with about 20 different community organizations, um, across the city, Community Engagement Leadership Team members, we called them, who helped us with outreach. And so these were organizations that worked directly with residents, whether they worked in a particular neighborhood, whether they worked with a particular population, such as seniors or immigrants or youth, um, and they helped us with engagement. So we did have engagement that was led by the Planning Department, meetings that we hosted, open houses and, and work sessions. We also had engagement that was led by, by our partners that we participated in. We had online options at every, um, stage of the process. And we really engaged in an iterative process where we heard from the community as we were setting the vision for the plan, as we were identifying the topics. Neighborhood cleanliness, that was, um, a big discussion here, was something that was very important to people. That was not something that was on the list that we started with, um, when we started with best practices from the American Planning Association, but it was very important to people. We heard that, um, we made an adjustment and made sure to include that in the planning process. Um, and then we held the next set of, uh, work sessions, had them in neighborhoods all around the city, um, and then, and then, uh, you know, planned the next part of the planning process based on what we heard. So we've done kind of lots of different engagement, tried to reach different audiences in different ways throughout, um, almost a three-year planning process.
So to that end, uh, and I've been working here for 24 years, and I've dedicated my career to dragging us closer to standard planning practice, if it'll kill me. We are a bit deficient in that we don't have a general land use map, like most jurisdictions do. That is a key tool that is needed to guide development in the future. Right now, when a rezoning bill is brought before, uh, well, not this committee, but, uh, possibly others, there is nothing to measure that against. And that's why we need to have this general land use plan, because that is reflecting the public's will of where we want to be going in the future. I would think it would alarm more communities than not to not have some channelizing of what should be acceptable for rezonings in the future. At the same time, we also don't want to have that set in stone, never to change again. So that's why you need to have a periodic review. The suggestion is, uh, that it be on a four-year cycle, probably in the second year of a council session. That way, freshman members can get their feet under them, understand the process, what's involved, be familiar with their constituency, so forth, and then have enough time left in the term to adopt that plan. So that's the suggestion for, for that cycle. Along with that, uh, we are suggesting channelizing rezoning bills into a single comprehensive rezoning bill yearly. Right now, we have rezoning requests on the fly. Anybody can request a bill, put them in at any particular moment in time, and it's handled like any other bill. Recent years, we've been seeing 15 to 20 or so per year, so it's not an astounding number of bills to, to put together into one look. Some jurisdictions that do it on a six-year or, or pick-a-number basis may see over 100 in their jurisdiction, uh, zoning requests that they have to look at. I don't think we're going to have a number remotely, uh, close to that. So it should be easy enough to handle in, in an annual process. One of the benefits there is we'll be then able to see them in parallel with one another as opposed to in isolation as each one comes through to make our best recommendations to you on what should happen next. So that's the rationale for the process. We think that's a dramatic improvement. Now, there will always be the opportunity if somebody cannot wait for the annual process. Again, some jurisdictions, they have to wait a few years. But for whatever reason, if somebody has an urgent need that they, they have to be considered sooner than that, they can introduce a, a separate bill. Or if there is something that is, uh, very controversial that, uh, doesn't want to be holding back the rest of an annual comprehensive rezoning effort, uh, that can be separated into a separate, uh, bill on its own as well. So those tools don't go away, this is a, a yes and, if that helps.
Thank you for, for that update. Did you have a question? I saw movement.
I was just going to say, uh, I'm really thankful to be developing this, uh, land use master plan. I mean, it's, it's essential. Without it, there is no look forward. You're only just going like, this is what things look like right now, right? And we cannot grow or develop as a city if we have nothing to look forward to in terms of how could we better realize the city's potential as a whole and neighborhood by neighborhood? And, you know, much to some people's dismay, owning property in a neighborhood does not grant you the entitlement to never see it change. And, um, there are a lot of people that would just like for nothing to ever change unless they say it's okay. And, look, to my point earlier, I think that the map doesn't go far enough, right? I don't think that we're doing enough to say these areas within proximity to, you know, what I would consider the scope of TOD, like, uh, high-frequency, the high-frequency bus network. It doesn't go far enough to, to, to say, really, these are not just opportunities for change, but these are places where we really need to want to change in order for us to better realize the city's potential, for us to become more sustainable, for us to become more affordable, for us to, you know, uh, realize a wide range of goals. And, um, you know, you got to lay that out. And that's different from rezoning individual properties. We have not just the right, but like, an obligation to be aspirational as a city. And, um, I'm just thankful that we're becoming aspirational in this. Thank you.
Thank you. All these points are well taken, and at this time, uh, the next, we're in recess, and the next, um, hearing on this bill is Tuesday, October 29th at 10:00 a.m. Thank you.